I call to order the Policy Resolution and Legislative Committee of the Board of Education of the Wausau School District. During this meeting, board members will, in many cases, be hearing information presented to them for the first time. Their responses will, in many cases, be extemporaneous and should not be considered either their final opinion on a matter, nor should any opinion expressed by an individual board member during any meeting be considered the opinion of the board as a whole unless it is presented by the presiding officer as such.
Thank you.
I seek the approval of the minutes and make a motion to accept the minutes of September 10th, 2018.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. And now, the legislative update. Midterm elections are being held on November 6th, 2018. Wisconsin will select a governor, as well as many other elected officials. These midterm elections could very well determine the future of public education in Wisconsin. I hope that everyone here and everyone listening will exercise their right to vote. It is also my hope that voters will educate themselves about issues that have an impact on public education, so that they are able to head to the polls as informed citizens. Two sources of information that may interest you. School board members, and I often refer to it, receive this publication called "School News." But if you go to the Wisconsin Association of School Boards website, you can, anybody can see this. There's a great article called "Walker Versus Evers" that takes both of our gubernatorial candidates and asks them questions and their positions on school funding and vouchers and mental health services and more. So that would be a great source of information. And secondly, I noticed that the Daily Herald had pretty comprehensive information on some of those same topics provided by state assembly candidates Patrick Snyder and Allison Leahy. So I would encourage everyone to go to the polls informed and think about public education and what you want for public education. And remember that early voting has started. Next, Policy 5706, prohibition against harassment and discrimination. We still have all of these policies listed, but the one that we're speaking about tonight is Policy 5750, I believe, expulsion.
So really, what I added to that was something straight from the state statute, requiring that a student would be expelled if they were possessing a firearm under the supervision of school authority or while at school. The only exception is, is if it's at a school forest during hunting season and there's special permission.
Okay. I did notice, you know, I read through all of these, and a lot of them are worded kind of in a similar way, but I didn't see anything in here. Maybe I'm just missing it, that if a student does something that's illegal, is that grounds for expulsion? Or do you not word it that way on purpose?
And really, all of these are verbatim from state statute. Put right into this.
Okay. So the only one we were missing was the item about the firearms.
Yes.
We didn't have that explicitly in our policy. Any discussion about that?
Regarding the firearm law, is number six, does that come from state statute as well? I ask because number three talks about endangering while under the supervision of a school authority or at school. Number four talks about endangering, not laundering, but endangering property, health, or safety of others under the supervision of school authority. And five regarding employees, but six is just endangering or threatening anyone, really, at any time. And I thought that sort of conflicts with the advice we received before, but that we can't punish students for conduct outside of school, whereas this would suggest that we can compel students for conduct outside of school. Because this doesn't say that it has to be a threat towards the school or employees. It's just anyone.
And I'm going to bring up state statute right now.
Angie, would you like me to speak to that a little bit?
Sure.
Because I've had some experience with that. Typically, as I've, as the statutes have been interpreted, when I've asked that question is, if a student, for instance, we had a student who, in another school district, off school grounds, made a threat against a school in which I was working, and a student in another district saw it, reported to their guidance counselor, reported to our guidance counselor, reported it to me, and that student, and this was in another district, that student was able to be disciplined even though it wasn't their district. We've also had students make threats against our school. Like, if a student online made a threat against our school district and wasn't, you know, under our supervision or on our property, we can certainly address that. So if behavior off school grounds impacts the school district, then we do have some authority there.
So is that, is that really where it comes into play? Because I know that was something that was explained to us during the bullying, when we were going over the bullying policy, was that we could punish for off school grounds if it impacted the school day, you know, the education, safety, you know, something of the school day. This, number six doesn't really say that, but maybe that's just...
A threat to the health or safety of a person, or making a threat to damage property. And it's unspecific whether it's our property or any person associated with it.
Yeah, just, you know, giving the example of bullying that occurs outside of the school day. We were advised that we could only punish that behavior, bullying that happens at the mall. And we had an example of that. We could only punish that behavior if it somehow carried over into the school day and impacted the school learning environment.
Correct.
But number six doesn't suggest that. Number six suggests we can just punish just for it. And so that's why I asked if that mirrors the state statute. If it does, then it does.
Which makes me uncomfortable as well, because to what end then?
Well, it makes me wonder if maybe we're not quite still limited as, as we thought. But I don't, maybe there's case law that clarifies that.
I'm, I'm reading the state statute, and I don't see that it mirrors. Where specifically?
Under 120.13. It's under number one. The school board may expel a pupil from school, and it's right at the very, very end. And I didn't change any of the rest of these.
Right.
These are as it was before.
I'm sorry, Angie, 120.13, subsection 1, then where?
Subsection C, and then it's under number 1. So it gives all of those within number 1.
And I'm looking for that specific language that we have in our policy.
In this subdivision, right at the very end of number 1, in this subdivision.
Okay.
Conduct that endangers a person or property includes making a threat to the health or safety of a person, or making a threat to...
So I wonder if maybe there's case law or something that has occurred after that that has clarified it and said that it has to impact the school day in some way? Because that would seem to suggest to me that, that we actually have the ability to discipline students for behavior outside of the school that doesn't necessarily carry over to the school day. We wouldn't have to prove that it's impacting our learning environment in some fashion.
How do we find that out?
I don't know.
Just, is it worth taking a closer look at that one piece?
Well, I mean, it mirrors the statute, so I'm not asking for it to change. It just jumped out at me as, as being different than kind of what we talked about when we talked about bullying, that we can't just punish bullying that carries over to the mall, to the movie theater, whatever it might be.
But you know what, Lance, your is a good point, because as I read this last sentence in this section, it just seems to clarify some language throughout here. But this language consistently seems to refer to at school, under supervision of a school authority. It's not, it's, it's discussing the conduct, but still geographically being at school or under the supervision. So I, I, I would, I would like some more information on that, actually.
Are we changing meaning by putting it out in, in a separate number by itself, rather than in the context of being in that paragraph?
That's, that's how this...
Yeah, because the policy doesn't seem, the way our policy is written seems to have it as a sort of standalone, it's an or, it's, it's not really limited to impacting the school day or, because if you look at 3, 4, and 5, those are really more connected to school, employees, school property. Whereas 6 just seems to sort of suggest on its own that we can discipline students.
Right. In the second paragraph, it says, "The board may expel a student from school when it is satisfied that the interest of the school demands expulsion." And then, I would think that everything in the third paragraph in the enumerated section has to speak back to that second paragraph. It has to somehow be in the interest of the school. And so, this, this seems to be a catch-all phrasing that as long as we can prove it's in the interest of the school, then it may be appropriate.
Yeah, I assume you mean going up above the second paragraph.
Wouldn't that apply then too, to that same bullying issue? Come on. And that's the one, frankly, that always confused me, that something happens outside the mall, movie theater, wherever, but clearly has an impact on a student that is in our school district. You'd think we would be able to act.
And what we were advised was that we can if it's impacting their actual learning, their education in the school, as opposed to if it's sort of, you know, something outside of school, not actually impacting their ability to learn, it's not. And that's, that's why this one jumped out at me, but you're, I don't know, Jeff, you might be right, because if you look up at paragraph 2, it really says we can only expel when it's in the interest of the school, demand expulsion.
Yeah, so, you know, I, I would guess this was written in such a way to be able to catch lots of different possibilities.
Would the board be interested in me confirming that and maybe getting some examples of expulsions that have occurred or been overturned and to kind of define that line?
Well, I, I mean, I think that would be a prudent thing to do, because if we're going to say that this mirrors the state statute, we need to be sure that that is actually the case.
So I think we could approve the change.
Yeah, I'm fine with the proposed change, but I still think we should look into that.
We could have, yeah, look at that and decide if we need to bring it back to change 6.
Yeah, we'll let you know what we find out, if we need to make any adjustments or interpretations.
Any other questions or discussions?
Just a curiosity question, just to make sure I got this right. So a student does not have to be 16 years old in order to be expelled, only for repeated So if, if a student is 14 years old and has 50 major violations, they cannot be expelled, unless one of those violations is a, is a threat, or, or, you know, somehow threatens somebody's safety or property. If it's just, if they're, if they're just being insubordinate or whatever, then they can't be expelled until they're at least 16.
Okay. That's the part.
So we would have to rise to one of those endangering property, health, safety?
Correct.
For prior 16.
Any other than number 7, which just is...
Correct.
...incorrigibility.
Okay, anything else? Then I would seek a motion to recommend to the full Board of Education the approval of revisions made to Policy 5750 expulsion procedures.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Next, Policy 9200, Board President. I think we just had a few tweaks to this one that we talked about last time.
Right, one was the new I, adding a member of the Gifted and Talented Committee, and then the other was improving the language of 10.
Anybody have any questions, or does it look like what we want now? Then I would seek a motion to recommend to the full Board of Education the approval of the revisions made to Policy 9200, Board President.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? And then we'll move on to Policy 5120, K-12 Assignment of Students to Schools. We talked about this last month, and, so take a look at the, I'm sure you looked at this. They're in discussion on that change to...
I apologize, I need to write out my acronyms. Dr. Hiltz pointed that out this morning.
IEP?
Yes, write that out. Not everybody knows what that means. So really, at the elementary level, we talked about that last time. We have the same curriculum, same programs across the district, and really, the only time we would consider an in-district transfer would be per an IEP team decision if the student required the care program, which is our, our program for autistic students, or our medically fragile program, which we host at Lincoln Elementary.
So could there be a case where a kid had a broken leg, and there's no elevator in the school, and they have to go to a different school where they can get around better?
We have two elevators.
Something along those lines.
Yeah, I think we have elevators in all of them.
Okay.
My only question was, and I know that this has happened in the past, where, let's say the grandparents live in the John Marshall district, and the, the family is in Hawthorne, and they need the grandparents as their babysitters. It's economically the only way that they can afford to work. What do we do with that kind of decision?
And really, we would look at case-by-case basis, I think.
Okay.
There's going to be some hardships that families just cannot overcome, and we're going to look at those individually. I think if we say, "If you have a daycare issue," then we'll open it up to everybody who has a daycare issue. We're asking for a whole lot of in-district transfers, but if they come to us and say, "Look, I really, I'm in a bind, this is my only option," we'll work with that family to figure that out.
Okay. I, because I, I just think that we're in the business to help parents as much as we can, and I understand that you don't want to put that out there, but it's comforting to know that you, you would be able to do. And I think your 90% capacity is a good, a good thing, because just as this summer, when we had the parent who moved in the neighborhood and then wasn't going to be able to send their child to that school because they were too many kids, that's an issue too. So, thanks. I, that just makes me feel better that if it was a real problem, we would work with them. Thank you.
Angie, regarding the secondary level, I've, I've had a couple inquiries about this in the last year, in the second bullet under that, when a comparable academic program offering is not available at the current school of attendance. How or who makes that decision? Because parents felt very strongly that there was not comparable enrichment at a particular secondary school, and that the alternative one did have it. And I, I had trouble filtering through how, how would I have known what was comparable?
Right, and I, the way it was worded before was "for an unusual educational reason." So that was such a gray area, and really, we, we had a hard time wading through, like, what would be and what would not be. But now, I think if we do have that, when it's a comparable academic program offering, that clears it up a lot, because what we were running into before was the athletic issue, which created a huge issue. And I think this will, this will be much easier for us to go through the criteria and say yes or no, based on that one simple bullet.
So is that something, then, that you would be overseeing versus the principal or administration at the, the home school, if you were?
Well, I would be, I would be working with them on that.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
It's my ultimate decision. Actually, it's Dr. Hiltz's ultimate decision, but he's put that in my hands. Thank you.
Okay. Good. That's helpful.
And it still leaves us with, like, we talked about the last meeting, it still leaves us with the big athletic issue, because you could just say, "I want IV," or "I want AP" in order to go to the school you want. But like we talked about at the last meeting, I'd rather err on the side of that might happen now and then, than err on the side of the student actually has legitimate academic reason they want to switch, and we have a rule that says they can't, because we're worried how it might impact athletics. So I'm, I appreciate this change, and I think it's, I think it's a good change, even though we still are left with that issue of changing high schools for athletic reasons.
I agree. To me, as long as it, there's, because the IEP obviously addresses one set of circumstances, but in the cases that I was kind of brought into, it was the other end of the spectrum, right, where there was more enrichment, it was more advanced classes. So it's nice that this will now be able to be opened up, I guess, to have that dialogue with the same considerations.
So Angie, your office will be policing whether the student actually is using that, that academic difference? Because if a student said, "Well, I want to go to West to be an AP," and the reason is football, let's say, we want to make sure that student actually is taking AP, and if they drop out, they don't get to stay at West.
I'm assuming the principals will probably be watching that pretty closely, and will let me know if that's the case. But then I need the authority to then say...
It's very difficult to enforce, though, because they're, they're going to say that when they're going into ninth grade, where they're not taking those classes anyway. It would be multiple years into their high school career before they'd actually be...
And after Friday's game, nobody from East will want to go to West for football anyways.
But, you know, those, like, those are the problems, those are the problems we talked about, and I, and those problems still exist.
Solve a lot of transfers.
But it's worth it. I just think it's worth having those problems, rather than foreclosing a student who legitimately has the academic reason for wanting to change.
Angie, we don't have a hardship clause in this policy. Would it be useful to put one in? Because parents don't know that that's an option, otherwise.
They call me anyways. I'll be honest. They'll, they call me anyways. I think if we put a hardship option in there, anybody can make a case for a hardship. I think it'll make it, they call me.
All right.
Yeah. I would vote that we don't, but if you would like it in there, we could...
Well, I think you'd run into some issues where you could have somebody saying, "I have a hardship," and so you have to go over, you have to go over your capacity. And now you're making students that actually live in that district have to deal with the larger capacity, and the teachers have to deal with the larger capacity concerns. Whereas this allows you some little room to, okay, there's, there is an extra space at that, at that grade level, so we're going to let it happen.
But there's no expectation.
There's no, there's no guarantee, at least.
Well, and also, you can see how this works, and if it improves the situation, and if there's still some things that don't work, we can look at it again, I guess, you know?
Yeah.
Hopefully, this will make a positive change.
Yes.
So I have a question, Angie. As far as IEP team decision, does this mean that the student has to have an IEP, or it's just, it's kicked to that team and that school to discuss and decide?
Right, so, that's a good question. So at the elementary level, really, we're saying there's not a reason where a student would have to transfer in district. There's not a reason where we would approve that unless it's a hardship that they would come to us with, or unless if a student does have an IEP and there's not a program for them in that school, which those are the only two cases.
Okay. And then I guess then that does raise the concern that Jeff raised, and I still have this concern about if there's two reasons, we only articulate one here in the policy. And I understand the concern that if it's articulated here, you might experience a wave of hardship claims, or maybe you don't. But I think if we're going to have a strong policy and a clear policy, it should actually state the two possible reasons. And I also take a little bit of concern with that, that anybody with a hardship might call. There might be people out there that don't, for whatever reason. And I don't know that, you know, maybe they won't read the policy either, but I think that it's kind of a mass assumption to say if somebody has a hardship, they call. There just might be people that deal with it. And if we can try to ease a burden on a family in the district, I think we should do that. And I do share the same concerns that Teresa addressed.
Angie, how many people do you think read the policies before they call you?
Not a lot.
Well, that's what I thought. So maybe it wouldn't be so bad to have it in there, not that many even bother to read it.
I think it would be fine to have it in there, but then we need more than just that. Because if you're going to, if you're going to add in there that people can transfer for hardships, then we have to add in more, more language to point out that it's not a guarantee, that we're still looking at capacity, that, maybe even defining what a hardship is, you know? That's where it gets, is the grandparent example a hardship versus my babysi, you know, what's the difference if it's your grandparents that's your babysitter, if it's somebody else that's your babysitter? And that's the one that I used to get a lot of calls about, is my babysitter lives on so-and-so school district.
There's only one, there's only two sets of grandparents. You can hire lots of different babysitters.
Tell that, tell that, tell that to the parent that has trusted the babysitter, and I don't trust the other babysitter. So I'm just looking him up on Craigslist, this lady, this person I trust.
Well, instead of having hardships, like, flagged in the policy, couldn't we just write something like, "For additional questions or further consideration, please contact Angie?" Can we just be very loose and light? Instead of having another page full of, "What do you do if there's a hardship?" Maybe we just put on there, "Contact Angie at this number, this email address for additional concerns or questions." It's okay. I just think if there's two distinct reasons, it feels like sloppy policy drafting not to be clear about that. We need to be able to go back to a policy as well and point to that. And let's say somebody contacts you, or contacts Dr. Hiltz, or contacts Jeff, contacts the full board. How did they get this, it's not in the policy? It's, it's, it's better to have that language to be able to point to say, to justify why a certain action was taken, because it is documented in the policy.
Yeah, I think you're right, that there is a problem with planning unenumerated exceptions to policy, to where we know we're going to make an exception, but it's not standing there. In any case, Angie, you're, you're going to be very reluctant to move any school beyond the 90th percent. And so, you know, the real problem is overloading schools and keeping it to that 90th or below. So I think as long as we're there, then we're not putting so much of an undue burden, though I know the 90th percentile isn't necessarily by grade at all, you know? But, well, perhaps it is. Do we, you know, do we do that by class? By classroom? It's 90%? Okay. Then, yeah, I mean, if, if, if we're sure that that hardship is the title under which we'll make another exception, it should probably be in the policy. If there's additional ones that, that you will be entertaining, then it could go more with Mary's suggestion. It's all the question, it's really the question of whether hardship defines that other category, or whether that category needs to be a broader idea.
Well, it might be better to be broader, what Mary suggested. Might be better to be broader. I mean, what if, what if we have, what if the team has 30 kindergartners enrolled, and you have somebody call up and says, "You know what? It's not really a hardship, but I work right next to Ramouton, and I'd like to just pick my child up and drop him off there, and there's only 15 kids in that kindergarten." That wouldn't be a hardship, but I bet you'd say, "You want to say yes?"
Yeah, it's not always a hardship. There are other cases.
Can't we just say something if, for other, for other special considerations, as approved by the Director of Pupil Services?
I like that.
I think, I think something general like that would apply to the hardship situation, would apply to the, "Hey, we got lucky, and somebody from a really crowded class is requesting to go to the, to the small class."
I wonder if I could ask, Angie, I know this, when the school year started, there were some requests that are very difficult to sort out, if I remember correctly. Does the language that's being suggested allow you to still, on a, on a factual basis, make the decisions you need to make? Or is this, is this opening up too broadly?
No, I, no, I think it's good to have that statement like Mary Emily just stated. I worry about putting the hardship in there again, because I think that will open it up to people who would read the policy or hear that we do, do in-district transfers because of hardships. I think that would open it up a little too much, where I would have to make difficult decisions, though whether you, some of the people are being truthful with me, and I don't like, you know, that's a hard situation to be in. But if they, if there would be a line in there that would say, "Contact Angie Lloyd to talk to her and have your situation taken into consideration," I would feel better about that.
Can I just share some reflection? Because sometimes we can be so policy-intensive. The former Director of Pupil Services, I went through a whole process with my daughter, because she was born, she was born two days after the cutoff and turning 5 years old to start school. I went through a long, rigorous process of taking her to be evaluated by the East High School psychologist, only to have him or her, I don't remember, deny my daughter. But then there was an appeal process, and I came in and talked to Dr. Lindell at that time. And you know what he said to me? He's like, "Mary, I leave it at the discretion of parents. If you think she's ready, then I support you." But I went through an entire policy of structure, only to now have an administrator tell, someone in administration tell me, "Mary, I support you as a parent, but why take me through such an intense policy?" Only to then tell me, "I support you. You know, go ahead and start. We can touch base again six months later." And she's been, like, accelerating. So I, I'm just, as a parent, and what I shared earlier, I, I like having things black and white, too. I appreciate that, everyone.
So I, I'm just, as a parent and what I shared earlier, I, I like having things black and white too. I appreciate that everyone. But I think that sometimes we're, we're so policy driven that I, I'm tired as a parent to go through our whole entire process in certain circumstances.
And I, I'll just give a hypothetical. Let's say we don't include the second scenario and then somebody is upset because they don't get a change that maybe a classmate had gotten or something and it's not documented in the policy and they wanna bring a claim against the district. And, you know, that drags us into litigation because we weren't clear in the policy about that second prong, that second possibility.
Well, wouldn't that sentence that they suggested cover that?
I mean, I guess I'd have to see.
Cause if you add hardship, then all of a sudden there's gonna be something else you didn't include.
Yeah, I think, I think Mary's suggestion and what you put into words, I think was pretty good. Generally, I would like it to be very set in stone when we can, but I think this is one of those situations where it's not always going to be the same because you're gonna have a different standard for moving a student into a small class than you are moving in, moving a student into a class that's already over capacity. You're just not gonna have the same standard for when you make that decision. And so I think kind of the general language like Lee suggested is probably the better way to go. It leaves you with hard decisions, but.
And I feel confident that if, when you're faced with those hard decisions, you're kind of, I mean, it's not fun, but it's part of the job, unfortunately.
And we had, I mean, we had, we had a decision a year or two ago, we had to turn down a student requesting to transfer into our district into South Mountain because the class was so small. I mean, we're, we're strapped for funding, that's, you know, how many thousands of dollars a year for twelve years and we had to turn the student away because we just, it was just too, too full of a classroom. Sometimes you have to make that hard decision.
Cassie, did you capture Lee's language?
I can get it from the video.
Okay.
But Angie, I do have a.
I was just gonna say maybe something with a reference to case by case basis.
Yeah.
That would be clarifying and still have some general, yeah, something to that.
Special circumstances.
And it does, it does say up in the, up higher up that, um, it references space, um, only if space is available. Um, so I don't know that you have to reference it again, but if, if it, while you're drafting, if it, if it seems like it's something that you want to emphasize, I don't think it would hurt. Just to point out that, that capacity is, is one of the considerations. If you feel like that would help you, I mean, I don't, I'm not saying I'm, I'm asking it to be there, but if you feel like that would help you when you're getting calls from parents of why did so and so get in and I didn't, you know?
So should we bring this back again or is that a minor change that we can just note now?
If it's not a rush, I might look at it again.
Put it back, yeah. Let's bring it back next week.
Angie, I do have a question. Um, are we done on that?
Yes, I think so.
Just wanna be respectful. Um, on four A regarding the transportation obligation, um, I'm gonna give you an example and then you just tell me if we prefer, if, if we provide the transportation or not. Let's say I have a son who's autistic and he currently attends Riverview. We live in Riverview. And I know that the program at South Mountain is more effective for my autistic son. And if I did an in-transfer from my son to attend South Mountain, do we provide the transportation?
That'd be a tricky question. Yes, that would typically be in the right.
Yes, if they need that because of their disability.
Okay.
We would, and it would, we would then pull the IEP meeting, perhaps add transportation to their IEP and that would be at the district's expense.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Okay. I'll see 1300, public participation in board meetings.
I can speak to that one just a little bit. Um, so at the last meeting, um, we had a, a situation where, um, we had some, some, some time limits and things and we weren't quite sure how to handle it. So I just, I made some recommendations on some language that I thought just might help us in kind of clarify the, that public, um, input session.
I'd, I'd like to change the last line. I think I sent you what I, I thought it was vague. It doesn't make it clear if it's board policy or law. And I just thought, due to public notice requirements set by law, board members are unable to discuss issues presented through audience participation. Just so that it's very clear that it's not something, we just don't wanna talk to you. It's, we are forbidden by law to.
I liked your wording as well.
Okay, I like it.
We did, uh, the Waspa Regional Workshop that we went to, there were some issues there. Um, but one of the things they said is, no, we actually could, we can't make a decision, but we could discuss things that somebody brought up. I think just as a board, we're so much better off if we don't because that line between making a decision and just discussing it is so razor thin. Even just discussing it will be shaping it in a given direction.
We received similar legal advice to that, I don't know how many years ago, um, same sort of thing, that, that there is a line and you have to be really careful because you can ask a couple of questions and you can have, but at what point does your discussion turn into a deliberation? Um, and just because something isn't an action item doesn't mean that there aren't, aren't notice requirements. So, you know, for the same reason, we couldn't tonight just not notice what we're gonna talk about and say, it's okay because we're not taking action on it. We're just gonna talk about it. Um, and so, yeah, I agree with you. I think you get.
It gets blurry.
Yeah, it gets blurry if you start having a deliberation and then voting on it at a future meeting.
Right, and the part that I struggled with though is that the current format, I've always felt, makes us almost unapproachable. And I, I, I hate that feeling because I can think back over the years, the number of people that have gotten up to speak, whether it was about busing issues and, you know, or not just behavior issues, but just really passionate things that they were almost, you know, pleading for a response from us and you can't say anything. I, I absolutely hate that part of it, which is why I, I don't know, I don't know how you get past that, balance that with the discussion versus, you know, agenda, item.
But certainly the chair can still point that out and just say, thank you so much for coming, you know, just, just as a general reminder, you know, we can't discuss it. It doesn't mean that we don't care about what you just said.
Well, that's what I said the last time.
Right.
And I think that's a useful corrective, just telling you that, you know, I'm sorry, that we won't be responding to you if this is the reason why and and it doesn't mean that we're not following up.
Well, that statement here, the public comments on specific personnel or student matters are not appropriate for presentation. Now, I get, I think the intent of that is to say, is to prevent someone from coming here and saying, you know what? I talked to Keith Hiltz and he's a jerk and, you know, I think this, that and the other thing. But if you don't list or mention a specific person or student, right, I mean, we've had plenty of parents come and talk about issues with their particular child. And if they're not mentioning that student by name, isn't that an okay topic if they choose to bring it to us? I, to me, that's kind of why we're here.
Right, and I, I have the similar concerns as well too because, and, and I, I hope to get some clarity tonight. There are times when we are agendized and there are people who are not presenting, but they're sitting out in the audience and they're either a, a staff of the school district or we reference them to get more information, right? So are we now saying that those that are sitting back there, we should not engage them at all? And are we also talking about those that come up to the podium during public comment for, uh, items that are on the agenda or just not on the agenda? I, I think that adding, you know, a couple of lines on here, we're eliminating, giving them that empowerment to be able to come here and just speak to us. But, but maybe I'm reading it wrong, but I mean, it's very, it, it's telling me that I can't.
That's what I'm saying. I think of the busing issue, if I read that, well, this is a specific student matter related to my child on the bus. According to this, that's not appropriate for here, but they're trying to raise awareness of it, which I think is appropriate. So I.
So are there some issues that would be best behind the scenes rather than in a public board meeting? Or is that the, just the choice of the speaker? If they wanna put it on the record in a public board meeting, that's their choice? Or if they'd like to work through the back channels? I sometimes wonder if they even tried calling anyone in the school district to resolve that at a different level.
No, my understanding is that this language exists because of a legal restriction. Having to do with personnel records and having to do with student records. That, that not only can we not share any information on a student's record or a personnel record, but it's my understanding that somebody from the audience can't do that as well.
And there are employees of the district that have the right to receive information and, and respond to it at the same time that the information is made public as well that comes into play. We went through that with, we went through the Christmas music issues. So that's another issue is that, um, there are statutory protections for, for employees that could be violated by us allowing, um, somebody from the public to come up and say their name and say things about them.
About me?
Yeah, but you don't get those protections. You're not covered by that statute. You're, you're not, you're not one of the ones that's protected.
I, I think too, maybe there needs to be more there because people come and speak about things on the record, that, I mean, on the agenda. And I had wording for that too and I, and I'll just read it because trying to explain it won't just not work. While the board may ask clarifying questions from the presenter, the topic will not be discussed during the public presentation portion of the meeting. Meaning it's gonna be talked about where it sits on the agenda. We aren't gonna discuss the thing while they're standing at the podium.
Yeah, like I'm okay with our process today. They're coming in and they get their five minutes, was it? Five minutes and we listen and we just don't say anything back, right? Like I love that process. But I felt like the language that's added here eliminates the freedom that we're giving during public.
You're talking about the first one, not the second one, right? The first, the public comments on specific personnel one, not the.
The last one we, we don't do right now. And, and I'm not concerned frankly, but to your, to your earlier comment about, you know, should they, are there certain topics that should have worked? Through back channels or whatever it is. Honestly, I think if somebody has the, the courage to get up here and stand and talk about an issue, I don't care if it's the first time anybody in the district is hearing about it, right? They're a community member, whether they're in the district or out of the district, they feel strongly. Exactly, they feel strongly. That's part of our government, right?
Right, as long as they're not defaming an employee or saying anything, having anything to do with a student disability matter, student behavior or disability matter. That, that's where it gets tricky is they cross the line and we've done, just allowed them to cross the line. I think that's probably where that advice comes from.
I just hate to see it more restrictive or more punitive is not the right word.
And what does student matters mean? Does that mean giving personal information about student? Why wouldn't you just say specific personnel or specific student?
I, I agree. I think that language is problematic. Personnel, that makes sense, but student matters, I mean.
Everything's certain.
I was gonna say, what is that, like ninety percent?
Yeah, I think it would be, I think it would be more useful if this sentence more specifically addressed the issue of, of identifying students by name or identifying employees by name as opposed to just matters in general. Cause that, I mean, I can see, like Mary said, it kind of gives the impression of her candidate not wanting to come and speak because lots of student matter, but.
Well, it'd be protective student and personnel information.
Right, they wouldn't know what that is.
That's really gamble, right? And say just, that's what this is now. Again, that's where we have to stop it. Well, I mean, but that's, it will always be too late when it's a member of the public.
Yeah, I'm here today because Bob Test did this, this, this and this. And then you bang the gavel, and then you bang the gavel, but that's already been said.
Right, there's no way to avoid that. You're just, they just can't go on.
Yeah.
So maybe we can make this even more clear. I mean, I think it's.
I like Jean's language for the second one and for the first one, I like what the intent is, but I just think it's too broad.
Protected personnel and student information.
Sure.
And, uh, another thing that came up in that Waspa Regional Meeting is the question of whether there should be limitations on defining the public. Do they have to be resident to the district? Do they have to own property in the district? Have a child in the district? You know, a person could have a child and not live in the district, of course, and they would be a member of our, of our school community. Do we, do we feel that we need to make any restrictions of those sorts? Because of course, you know, with a, with a hot button issue, you get people essentially bust in to give speeches to.
Yeah, we have people from all over the state.
Yeah, that aren't from.
We never have restricted, was there a recommendation or some reason that they thought it should be?
Well, that was a really problematic presentation.
For any reason. A neighboring district brought it up and I know why and I, I, I'm very certain I know why. It would have had problems, but has it been a problem here?
It hasn't been abused in years.
I mean, the only, I mean, what would be the problem? I mean, the only problem would be if it takes a long time, right? That's the only problem. What, what problem is a receiving information?
The other problem would be that you have a bunch of speakers on an issue that aren't stakeholders within our school system influencing the process.
Depends if it's.
Yeah, but a lot of them have a connection. There's a connection here, a grandchild in this.
Or they're from here and they still care about the district. I mean, if it hasn't been a problem, I don't see a need to, to limit it. I agree.
I'm not so sure about that. I think that, uh, given our current political climate, uh, we could hit a hot button issue and literally we could have people bust in here from Chicago or Los Angeles and, and, uh, they're really not stakeholders in the issue. They're in here to do a political, uh, move. I think we ought to limit the stakeholders.
Local control.
Exactly.
Well, let me share this perspective and I, and this is the first thing that comes to mind. Uh, the Mung community, we're all very connected throughout the country. And when we support one another, I mean, if, if we have a hot issue that's happening in Wassa, you bet that someone that's, uh, that's an advocate or someone that's, you know, fighting for Mung rights or something from California or Canada. I mean, they're gonna come here to Wassa and they're going to address, you know, the board or the council or whatever the case. And we had something that was similar in that situation a few years ago. Maybe they didn't come to a board meeting, but they sure had picket signs outside of the school district, you know, outside of Longfellow here. So there could be instances where, I'm, I'm just sharing perspective, that there may be others who are passionate about the cause and we may not have a strong voice in the Mung community to come here a, and to address certain concerns. And, and that was kind of the case, you know, a couple of years ago. So I would, I would just encourage us to think about the smaller communities, uh, that may not have that strong voice and they may need it from elsewhere, uh, to help elevate them, uh, so that they could be heard.
Is there a way that someone from the community could defer to an expert from, that they brought in?
Well, I mean, they could easily get around it by just giving their presentation to someone from the community to read it, but.
There could be fear of retaliation or probably finding. It's a small community here. I certainly wouldn't wanna bring my bridges with potential career opportunities and what the, what the media would say about.
We don't verify district residency and someone could say.
We ask people to give their address.
Well, sure, but that's all after, I mean, if they're lying about it.
Why do we ask them to give their address? What is the purpose of that? I thought it was to show that they were a member of the Wassa school district.
Well, it, it makes a difference what weight we give to people too. If, if we think it's some partisan person that's coming in here just to do the party line spiel and they're from Timbuktu, we won't give them the same weight that somebody that comes in and they've lived here their whole life and they've had their children and grandchildren in our school district.
I would ra, I would rather the president have the ability to reduce the five minutes to less than five minutes in situations where five hundred people show up than I would to have a restriction that says you only can be a.
The county board limits, limits the speaking time to fifteen minutes total. That's, that's what you get. You have fifteen people, each get a minute.
So that brings up.
And I don't wanna go that, no.
That brings up another issue though, and that is that, that someone can come in on a particular issue. Take the Horace Mann issue. We had a whole gallery full of people. They only had one or two spokesmen, but there were a number of people that here, if they would have been able to just simply register and indicate a position, at least they would have been, it would have been recorded in some way. And I, and to me, that's, that's important. And the other procedural piece is, I don't know that we should have people from the public have to sit through a whole onboard meeting to wait for the, to speak on something that's not on the agenda. Uh, that, to me, that's just discouraging public participation.
Don't we want to?
So those are two different procedural issues.
And they don't, I, the counter to that is that they don't care enough to even watch a board meeting. And on the, on the issue of registering people.
Unless I share our own opinions on that.
On the reg, on the issue of registering people, my fear of that would be what you're basically are then encouraging is to have like a little mini vote where people are gonna get five hundred people to come in and sign up for something and now you're having a little, turn your board meeting and then.
That's it, they can always write a petition.
And that would be much more orderly than, than actually having them have to come in here and, and, and vote on.
Well, and that, that's.
I'm really not hearing a lot of problems with how it currently exists.
No.
So it sounds to me, if it's not broke, why are we trying to fix it? I mean, I understand some of these, these tweaks here, but some of these other things.
Now, those are just things brought up at the meeting that they, that they thought we ought to consider.
Yeah, there isn't any recommendation you can make. Yeah, there isn't any recommendation to make.
We can make that clear about talking about personnel and student records and things like that.
So we got those two improvements to make on the.
So should we just bring that back next month?
Sure.
Okay. All right.
And then the sign in sheet is the same, same set of issues.
But there's a difference in that last line because we can talk to the people that are talking about the, what's on the agenda because it's, no, it's.
Yeah, that line shouldn't be in the, on the agenda one. It should only be in the, not appear on the agenda.
Right.
I like Jane's language better.
Okay, so that one needs to be taken.
Okay. So I guess we're down to item eight. Licenseur changes update. Heard about this before, and now there's even more changes.
But this is just a report, but do you, do you feel the need for Lance or Lance and myself to be out of the room?
It's for getting an ESL license?
It's an ESL, yeah.
That one conflict me. I might have an ESL license, so.
Are we at the culturally responsive teacher brochure?
That's, that's the first.
Okay. I didn't know if we were passing over.
The first reading.
So my co-presenter isn't here right now, but I will speak for him. There were some licensing changes in DPI where teachers who are already a licensed teacher working in your district, if you provide professional learning for them, they can then acquire an additional or add-on license. And that is the case with the ESL license. I know this is a recurring conversation that we've had here. And the Wausau School District does require all elementary classroom teachers to obtain an ESL license with the new licensing law. First year teachers in the district, not necessarily first year teachers, will have a waiver from obtaining a license with stipulation. So they'll have a year to become outbooked to the district, to get to know the curriculum, the schools, et cetera. And then their second year, they will apply for a three-year license with stipulations, at which point they will begin our in-house professional learning programs that includes the EL Academy and the Culturally Responsive Academy. At the end of completing both academies, they will submit evidence, a portfolio of evidence and artifacts, that they are a highly qualified EL teacher to DPI, and hopefully DPI would issue them that license. I did share the two academies with you in Board Book. I just wanted to point out something about the EL Academy. I structured this similar to the coursework that I taught with Dr. Holmes through the UW Oshkosh and the Oshkosh cohort group that we mentioned last year or the year before. And the first page takes us through the bilingual, bicultural guidelines to be a bilingual, bicultural educator. And I, and throughout the brochure then, I did a crosswalk between the bilingual, bicultural education guidelines to the programs that we offer and some possible artifacts that teachers may include in that portfolio of evidence to DPI. So this is really good news. So the only cost to our teachers at this point would be that second year when they apply for the three-year with stipulations at $125. So any questions?
I have a question. So this first document, the culturally responsive teacher document, page two, it says that diversity in the Wausau School District choose three of five course offerings. And I'm really thrilled to see the, the diversity here, Hmong students, Latino students, African American, LGBTQ, gender differences. My question is though, where's the course on Native American, especially we have eleven federally recognized tribes in Wisconsin?
Yes, we do. Our population is, is very small here, and all teachers take a Native American or teachers that are not certified Wisconsin Native American, Wisconsin Native American Studies class?
Well, I'm just going to say, I've raised a number of times my concern with Act 31 and how effective it is, and the lack of course offering for teachers is a bit alarming to me.
And maybe we make an option. There's something called the Network. O'Connor, I can't think of his first name.
David.
David, thank you. O'Connor, he facilitates Native American Studies. Matter of fact, in CISA IX on Monday, I believe, this upcoming Monday, he's facilitating Native American Studies program at CISA IX. So maybe that would be an option that we could include in the academy, that if you, I do not feel qualified to facilitate a Native American Studies program.
I'm just going to say that as a Ho-Chunk woman and a mother of a Native American child, and I, I know Native children in our district, reading this is hurtful to me.
And I'm, I'm Native, I'm part Native too. And I know many Native families as well, so, but we looked at our larger populations when we put the academy together.
Does David O'Connor work for the DPI then?
Yes.
Okay. So he's their native expert in the Department of Public Instruction?
Yes. And he facilitates a week-long, almost in Crandin, Wisconsin, first week in August, a program up there?
He does a really good job too. When I worked for the Stackbridge-Muncie community, I wanted to learn as much as I possibly can about Indian country. And I've worked in Indian country before in eight different states that we supported. He did a really fantastic job, and it was actually held at a high school in Pascrean and where Forest Autowarmy up there somewhere.
Oh, yeah.
And did a really fine, a fine job. And we, it may have been something that was for like all school districts. It could have been for CISA IX, I don't remember. But they go in depth with a lot of history and then onsite, you know, visits. In that case, we were at Forest County, Pontawatomi. And so it was really nice to have that understanding and that background. And I would share your sentiments, Tricia, that I would have loved to, to see that as an option there as well too, and I hope that that's something that we can pursue and have that be included.
I agree. We don't want to offend anybody or any particular.
There's another local contact. His name is Chris Munson. He earned.
Dr. Hiltman with her.
Oh, I'm sorry. And I think that would be another good contact for us, I think.
Or her husband, John Greendear.
We need more, more representation. I mean, we need our teachers better educated and we need to do a better job in our schools. Starting with the horrific Thanksgiving programs we have. Shannon, I thank you for not having the first year teachers in our district have to worry about being ELL certified. I think that's one thing that is taken off their plate, and I think that's really important. So I'm glad that we're moving that way. So I think that's great.
Yeah, with the consent of the Education Department, we thought that was important. Yes, I think that's awesome too.
Is it still true that surrounding districts do not require that?
Yes.
At all? So we are still unique in that sense? In terms of something on the teachers' plate that our competition may not require?
But I'm going to guess it's because we have a higher percentage of ELL students than many of the districts that surround us. Would that be correct?
Yes.
And also this council for professional development on the compensation model.
No, and, yeah, I understand.
So it's not like they're doing it and not being compensated.
So Shannon, just.
I hear what you're saying.
Just some clarification. So we waived the first year, right? But then by the third year, they have to apply for their license?
The second year, they apply for a three-year license with stipulation. So they have three years to complete the programs that we offer.
Okay.
And submit a portfolio of artifacts and evidence. The license is not renewable, so they have to do it within those three years.
Okay.
Nothing is stopping teachers from beginning some of the programs this first year.
Okay. And then I'm, I'm looking at the PowerPoint presentation, the last item on here, and it talks about the implications for the district. So does that mean that before, before we were requiring educators to go outside to like the university and take courses, right? And we would reimburse? But in this situation, in the context of today, we are now providing that professional academies are learning for them. So it's actually a savings for us.
More convenient for the teacher.
It's more convenient for the teacher, right? So that's the implication that's, that's being stated here is that we will no longer reimburse, right?
We would no longer reimburse.
The opportunities are for you to take the academies within the curriculum that we have here for development.
And we would reimburse $850 at the end when they completed the program per teacher. So it was just a portion of what they paid in tuition.
Okay. But we will no longer do that.
We won't need to do that.
Because we have a whole new process.
And they can earn the credits and points toward advancement on that compensation model too.
Okay.
Right. So it's our expense the teacher's saving.
And that's because of your collaboration with UW Oshkosh?
Well, I use that, yeah, partly. I use that collaboration with UW Oshkosh to put together an academy that is similar to what they would have gotten at the college level or at UW Oshkosh.
Can I just ask one more question, Shannon? Sorry to interject. Is there a disadvantage for, you know, for our educators for taking the academies here versus?
They get the license.
Do they get the credits at the university level?
Yes.
I remember we talked about this, like last year or something. What was, are there some complaints about, I shouldn't have used the word complaints. Are there some disadvantages with going with the academies being offered here versus the educators being able to go to outside university? Is it credits or is there no difference at all, no disadvantage?
You can still get the license. I think the difference is, is through the college or university, you're getting those college credits. So if you were working toward a master's degree, for instance, you wouldn't have those credits toward that master's degree. I know two of the teachers that completed the Oshkosh cohort group are using those credits toward their master's degree at Oshkosh right now. So there's that. And teachers don't have to go with this option. Yep, they still can do that.
But they wouldn't get reimbursed anymore, right? They can choose to take the university courses and get credit, but what went in the past, before we, you know, this, they would get the reimbursement.
But you wouldn't for any other master's program, so.
Say that again?
You wouldn't get reimbursed for a different master's program. So you just have to choose either to get the licensure through the district for free or go for your masters in this area or any other area on your own.
I'm just saying that educators that were really benefiting from getting the credits for their program for this specific course that's available, they wouldn't have that option anymore. They wouldn't get the reimbursement. It's a perk.
Right.
You know, so I'm just saying we're taking that away. I just want that, all of you to be aware.
But that means they're getting, they're getting this information, this education, and they're using it in our district. They won't have the credits if they want to go somewhere else that could give them more money for their credits?
Outside of the state.
Outside of the state, okay.
Right. Because it's a state-level licensure. So they have licensures throughout the state. If they move to another state, that could potentially be an issue. But it, but it sounds to me like now, just for a point of clarification, that we treat these classes like we treat any other university classes.
But they just won't get the credits.
Right, we were subsidizing these before and we're no longer subsidized, so it's just like.
When you look at the total cost of a master's degree, $850 is kind of a drop in the bucket anyway.
Well, $850 in someone's raise is not a drop in the bucket for a compensation model. So I think that $850 means a lot to a lot of people that have been working in our district as educators. So I just, I want us to be aware that there, there may be one or two, five or 10, maybe none, that may disregard and not care about this reimbursement, but you might have the one or two that says, what's, what is the board thinking? So I just want us to be aware that that's a change.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
Any more discussion on that?
Where did we land then on the, on the Native American? Was that going to be added here in some form?
Maybe we could put like an option, like different learning option, like a choice.
Or maybe that could be a professional learning opportunity for everyone, not just people who aren't part of the security.
And that's, that's what I was thinking. Make it broader so you cover more of the teaching staff.
Yeah, I appreciate that we picked, you know, the, the larger populations. I, I don't know how we account or how we counted really for some of these populations, you know, to choose the, the courses, you know, like if there's 10 Native Americans and there's 12 LGBTQ, I don't know how we identify, you know, certain populations to make the decision. It seems odd that we would just go by numbers and leave one of them out when we know that there's a presence here.
It's, that's what we have at this point. We certainly can add to it.
Just, who's qualified to teach it?
I just want to reiterate when we say, you're the smallest population, so we're not, we don't think that we need to educate our teachers on your population. That sends a message that we're invisible.
But to be fair, that, that isn't.
I understand, that might not be the intention, but.
But that, and that wasn't close to what was said. What was said is, we address largest populations with this. I mean.
And that sends a message that the smaller populations is important.
But saying, the way I feel, is different than saying that what was said to us is that we, that your population is small and so we're not going to deal with it. Because that was never said or suggested. All that was said is that we're addressing with these options the, the populations that we know are the largest in our school district.
We could have Muslim in there too.
Which, you know, it sounds reasonable to me. And now if we want to also look into the other, long, very long list of other small percentages. You know, I think that's a reasonable look into, but.
So we're at the point now that you're going to look into and find out about visibility?
I just have to share one thing though. Being a person of color, we're always very sensitive to how things are implied, communicated or not communicated. And I think that what Tricia is sharing with all of us is that maybe it's not common for different or other ethnicities to see it, but being a Hmong woman and growing Hmong, we always have that. Like, are we included? You know, do they, do they consider us? Do we matter? And that's every day. That's every day for a person that's of color. And so there's, there's an emotional factor to it, there's a sensitivity factor, and I just want to continue supporting Tricia on what she's sharing with all of us because that's the beauty of why we have diversity on our, on our board, is that we all bring different perspectives, different lens, and, and I truly appreciate that and I embrace that about all of us. And so it's hard. We, we feel it every single day. My fellow peers on, on the board here may not see it the way how maybe a Tricia or Mary would see it, but it's, it's constant. And, and so I just want to validate your concerns, Tricia. I'd love to see an option out there that would be inclusive of the Native culture, language into those opportunities. And there may be others.
And let me just, at no point did I suggest that I don't support adding that. And at no point did I suggest that Tricia's feelings weren't real. I only disagreed with, it sounded to me like Tricia was saying that she was told that population is small, so we don't care about it. That, that's, the way you said it, that's, that's the message I got.
And I'm sorry, that's, that's actually how I heard it.
Right.
So I'm hearing differently based on my experiences and, and, you know, I apologize, but that's what I heard was, we have, Native American is the smallest population, so we don't have that here.
Well, I don't, and I never heard smallest population. I didn't hear small population, but it was expressed that these are the biggest populations. That doesn't mean that we shouldn't also look into some of our other smaller populations, Native American and many others. I mean.
Absolutely agree.
For sure.
And being Native, I appreciate what she's saying, and I, and I think there's certainly lots of information out there, and, and it would be really to the benefit for many reasons, including historically, the impact that we've had in culture.
Well, it's not as though, it's not as though these programs don't carry over, right? It's not as though if you, if you attend this one program on African-American studies that, that doesn't also broaden you and help you in, in other ways with other students. So it doesn't have to be just, well, you know, 2% versus 5%. I think, I think they're all helpful. Any other options that we can add, I think would be great.
At the risk of, of creating a, a major question here, all of the issues that are At the risk of, of creating a, a major question here, all of the issues that are here are really, basically, most of them are unchangeable. I mean, if I'm Native American, I'm Native American. There is a lot of evidence that would say that that whole question about the LGBTQ is not necessarily a, a biological reality. So there is, there's a very, very difficult subject to deal with, recognizing that there are a lot of students that claim that. But there's also really good evidence that there may not be a biological basis. I question whether that should even be included in here, except that I think that we do need to be sensitive to those students.
Well, that's the key, isn't it? Putting the biological base to the side.
Well, race is not a biological category. It's, it's a cultural category. Identity is a cultural category, it's not a biological category. And I think that's really a slippery slope to be going down in deciding that, that I think that someone's identity is legitimate or illegitimate. And so I, I don't think we should go that direction at all.
I agree with you, Beth. We're, we're talking about diversity here, we certainly should include our LGBTQ students and, and the education with working with those students as a diverse population.
Okay. And I, I want, just want to say, shortly after I got on the board, I took part in a diversity circle and I just highly recommend it for anybody. It broadens your horizon.
Okay, seeking motion to adjourn. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?